Almighty God, the source of knowledge and understanding, guide the minds of those who are about to take counsel together on matters concerning this county, that in their debate and in their decisions, they may faithfully discharge the duties of their office and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those they seek to serve. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. And 243rd meeting this evening. Just like to read following your instructions. Move this away, see if that makes any difference. Hello. So notice to everyone who's recording the meeting, if you would like to film, blog, tweet or take photographs of the meeting, you are permitted to do so without causing disturbance to the meeting proceedings. A designated area has been set out to allow you to do this. Please be aware that you are not permitted to move outside the designated area as this may disrupt the meeting. A protocol which governs this activity has been placed on the table for your information. Please also be aware that members of the public who are not part of the meeting, are not present, are being recorded and therefore please do not include them in any recording activity. Thank you for your cooperation. So we'll move now to, sorry apologies for answers.
We've received apologies from councillors Asplin, Conley, Hollis, Parsons, Steen, Waynight and Walts.
Thank you very much indeed. So item number one, chair, this announcement. Yes, I have had the pleasure of attending the services Thanksgiving for Rutland at Peterborough Cathedral. It really was a lovely afternoon. I know that those members who were present, I'm sure enjoyed it as well. So if I move on now to item number two, announcements from the leader, Mr. Peggy.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder that the roadshow for Better Care Together, not to be confused with the Better Care Fund. Better Care Together is the Leicestershire hospitals, the GPs and the county and ourselves on the future shape of hospitals and health and social care in Rutland, Leicestershire and Leicester City. I'll send you out a more detailed one so that you've got reference to exactly what he's doing. It is at Tesco's on the 18th of March and I would recommend if you were in the area, it is well worth a visit.
Thank you very much indeed. Any announcements from most of the cabinet this evening? So item number three, declarations of interest. Councillor Begg.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Item nine, 2.1 Shopfronts. If it should enter into the debate time, they pay no price and that debate time will remain in the chamber as long as retail purposes and etc.
Thank you very much indeed. Any other members?
I've definitely said that retail purposes in all of them.
Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else? So item number four, this is the previous meeting. You do have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. So I'm going to take them separately. I could ask for a proposer please for the minutes of the 9th of February. Thank you, Councillor Peggy. And the second of the 9th of February. Thank you very much indeed. All those in favour, please. And against?
Zero.
And abstentions?
One, two, three.
Thank you. And so the 242nd meeting of the council, which was held on the 23rd of February 2015. Do I have a proposer for those minutes, please? Thank you, Councillor Peggy. And the second, Councillor King. Councillor Richardson, do you wish to make a comment regarding this?
Minutes are there for purpose there to have a record on what was said so that people, members of the public can go to those minutes and see how the debate went, see who proposed what, who proposed against, how they discussed it and debated it and so forth.
Councillor Richardson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, those minutes, the minutes are not a proper record of the meeting that would enable the public to look at that and see what was debated on that night. So I'm saying that the minutes should be far more comprehensive than is being put down. You would find better minutes in a voluntary organisation of meetings.
Thank you for your comments on that, Councillor Richardson. And the minutes are sort of as they are this evening and obviously that would be a conversation for a different occasion. Interestingly, the voting for and against is actually detailed on the minutes that we're discussing this evening. So if I could ask for all those in favour, please.
Thirteen.
And against? And abstentions? Thank you very much indeed. Item number five, petitions, deputations and questions to members of the public.
Number six, Chair.
Thank you very much. Item number six, questions for members of council. We even have one question. Councillor, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. For members, portfolio holder. Can the portfolio holder confirm the Rutland County Council will be taking the necessary steps to install the Chamber CCTV video recording facility linked to the existing current RCC website voice recording system and also copied as per the simple web-based CCTV system installed and now in use at nearby Leicestershire County Council headquarters? Thank you.
Councillor Peggy, I believe you mentioned.
Members were recalled back in September 2013. We discussed the whole issue of visual and audio recording. At that time, we made the decision that we would not go down the route of visual recording partly because of the cost of approximately 17,000 pounds per year. New legislation that was introduced last year entitles members of the public and pressed to make their own recordings, both audio and visual for all public meetings of the authority, should they so wish. And this would not change even if we did go for meetings. A report on the continued use and complication of the audio recordings, which give a full account of a meeting, including who said what because that is a natural recording of all council meetings, will be submitted to the next council in due course where councillors will be able to debate the pros and cons of continuing with the recording system or expanding it in some way which could include visual recordings. The response for those who are interested to the audio recordings on the council's website has seen 383 plays overall for the 11 recordings that were published.
Thank you very much indeed, Councillor Peggy. Do you have supplementary questions, Mr.?
Yes, please, Chair, if I may, with a question again to the leader. Does the leader agree that by not supporting Chamber CCTV linked to existing Chamber audio recording facilities would ensure more accurate accountability sooner than the public having to watch unaccountable blog side recordings with no right of reply?
Thank you, Councillor Begg.
As I explained at the next council, if members so wish, we will consider it but the current decision is that we are not.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you for your question, Councillor Begg. So we'll move now to item number seven. If I may just draw the members' attention to the fact that the report which we are due to consider under that item should actually be under item number 10. It's actually a report from the Conduct Committee, not a referral of the committee decision. So under sort of item seven, without that section, I believe you will know that. Thank you. So we'll move to item number eight. As I say, we will be taking the Conduct Committee under item number 10. So item number eight, calling of decisions from cabinet meetings.
Number six, Chair.
Very much indeed. So we move to item number five, reporting to the Cabinet on page 12 of our agendas this evening. So Councillor King, I believe you're introducing that item.
Thank you, Chair. Part of the need to move forward on the Rutland Local Plan, that document that sort of looked like the Fallsbridge painting was, sort of found a bit of paint for wood, having to keep rethinking. We're back into a review of the local plan which will take in place over the next few years. And we're almost in the dis-council, so we're not dealing with the substantive parts. Whereas an early part of that will be asked to be reviewed, the supplementary planning documents, and a couple of these in specific question tonight, which were reported to Cabinet on the 17th of February. They are fairly simple. If you haven't got the whittily this evening, there isn't a lot changed from previously on that. There was a slight variation that the Cabinet requested, which was some slightly revised wording on 212, which is to take account of more modern material rather than more justifying material. But in essence, there's no major alterations on that particular document and I would ask members if they can please consider that tonight. I'm prepared to propose the document and if that can see for a second. And I'll have the answer questions, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed, Councillor. Can you do have a second of that before this evening? Thank you, Councillor Peggy. Members, over to you. Councillor Cross.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. Very pleased to, maybe addition to this, but to note that these are again guidance notes that are not set in tablets of stone and therefore councillors and the planning committee have the option to take their own rather. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Councillor Cross. Any other members this evening? Councillor King.
I'd love to have a read with Councillor Cross, Chair, as you are well aware and as you seem quite aware. But for clarification, these are supplementary planning documents and therefore do carry a certain weight. Yes, we as members and officers have a certain amount of variation that one can take when you read any policy document. That's why often there is a committee in order to do that. But your basis for your decision has to be these documents. So I think it's only important to say, they are not set in stone but they are cement that's setting slowly and will eventually become part of a document which we do have to work with. We can't ignore supplementary planning documents. They will be part of the local plan, they are at the moment. So I don't want to give them the impression that we ignore them when it comes to actually planning decisions. And that's what I just remember, but that's a thing for our offices as well.
Thank you for your clarifications today, Mr. Cross. As you have spoken, would you like to make a point of personal consideration?
Just to inform Councillor King that I do not accept what he's just said.
Okay. We'll move swiftly on. Other members? On that basis then, would members, are they happy to take both proposals together or would be preferred certain set of, actually, yeah?
They could be fine made from chairman to secretary.
Yeah, of course. So if I could, I thought, sorry.
We're speaking on both then?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Financial management.
No, we'll come onto that separately after Councillor King has done that matter. I do apologize, I meant sort of recommendation 2.11 and 2.12. So if I could ask for all those in favour of 2.11, please. And against?
Zero.
And abstentions? Thank you. And the recommendation 2.12, all those in favour, please? And against?
Zero.
And abstentions?
One, two, three, four.
Thank you. So we'll now move to recommendation 2.2. Councillor King, I believe you're also introducing this item.
Thank you, yes. Quarter three financial management report. We're only dealing this evening with this 112.2.1, which is should the council receive winter pressures funding, that the director be authorized to use that to account for increased activity. However, we now receive that indication that we have received such funding but it clearly won't be spent by the end of March and therefore what I'm seeking is for provision as it sits in that part naturally. Funding also required for 2014, but it's transferred to social care reserve to be used in future. So at this stage, we have received funding, circa 120,000, I think, away to the director of none ahead, yes. But it will not be spent within this year and therefore we're asking, as the report says, to go forward following that spending on that in future. Any comments?
Thank you very much, Councillor King, and a second please. Thank you, Councillor Peggy. So just for clarification, this is the only area that we are discussing this evening on quarter three financial management report, this particular section. So members, over to you. Councillor Richardson.
I presume the winter pressures are to do with highways and I'm still curious what they mean by meet the cost of increased activity. What increased activity are we talking about, referring to? But secondly, if it's in the highways budget, how are we deciding now to move to a social care reserve budget? I mean, are we suggesting that there's already a pressure in the social care reserve? I mean, where we have a report to determine where the pressures are within our financial budget and then we'll have the best view of such money.
If I may, I'd like to ask all members to sort of either ask their questions or make their points and then come to the portfolio holder to sum it up before we break this evening. If anybody else has any comments they'd like to make at this time on that one. Councillor Begg.
I'm not asking questions, not the highways budget, not my portfolio.
Thank you. Would any other members like to make any comments this evening? Councillor King, would you like to?
I think so, with the announcement, Chair, by my portfolio holder. This isn't highways money. At the various scrutiny panels, I'm sure the questions were asked. This is, this is one of the deals with winter pressures, not related to highways but relating to the people department. And therefore it should tend to be used in that department.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've had a proposal and a second for that recommendation this evening. So if I may ask for all those in favour, please. And against? And abstentions? And the key decisions on page 14 are for noting only, so they do not need to be voted on this evening. So if I can move to agenda item number 10, but if we can move back to page four, please, for the Conduct Committee report. And Councillor Begg, I believe you're going to be introducing that right this evening.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Chair. 2.1, I wouldn't go into any detail about. We've had, it is really a timing and clarifying operation, I think it's fair to say. If there are any questions on that, I will attempt to answer them. We have the legal officers in attendance at meeting and I was very petulant forward. 2.2, members may wonder, Mr. Shatford is one of the two independent members. His term of office, we originally proposed would be co-termus with the other independent member, Mr. Grimes, and would go to 2016. There's no requirement, there's no reflection on Mr. Shatford's competence or anything else. I'm very grateful to Mr. Waller, who pointed out that to lose one independent member might be acceptable, to lose two at the same time would be careless in the sense that we didn't exactly have a great rush of people who were prepared to serve in that capacity. So that is the reason for that. It is again a piece of procedural rather than anything more. And so it would simply be that Mr. Shatford goes to 2016 and then, I will not review. Mr. Grimes continues to 2017. And that, as I say, I will repeat, I am, the members of the committee were grateful to Mr. Waller for pointing out that the like, well, the possibility, not the likelihood, I should say, that we will be without an independent member being 2017, if that were the case. So I hope that, Madam Chair, if there are any questions, I will attempt to answer.
Sorry, yes, I am indeed, thank you, but I'd ask you a second.
Okay, do I have a second, Miss Waller? And members, do you feel like to make any comments this evening, all those? No? I will take the recommendation separately. So recommendation 2.11, that council adopt the revised Member Code of Conduct. If I could ask for all those in favour, please? And against?
Zero.
And abstentions? Thank you. And recommendation 2.21, that the council approve the initial extension of Mr. Shatford's appointment as independent person to 31st of March 2016. All those in favour, please? And against? And abstentions? Thank you. And I've not received any other matters from committees of the council this evening. So we'll move to item number 11, reports from the scrutiny commission on scrutiny panels. Councillor Lamy.
Thank you very much, Chair. As members will see in the papers, each panel has submitted a annual report to this. It's laid out in the reasons to move to the constitution. The report itself is quite self-explanatory, listing what each panel has looked at and the outcomes and highlights from this from 2014 to 2015. The reason for doing this was to consolidate and show what each panel has undertaken and so that moving forward, the new council can see what has been done before and have it as a reference for them when deciding how they would want scrutiny to work in the new council. So it is a report just documenting what we've done before, which is the first time, and then offering reference to the future. I have to take any questions, but it's quite self-explanatory.
Thank you. Members, would anybody like to, Councillor Oxley?
Well, just following on from that, Madam Chair, I believe this is a very important document and that it will also tell the general public about the work that we do, that scrutiny. And it will also perhaps indicate that they have questions or about my show or what's exactly which scrutiny committee has, which roles it plays. So I certainly acknowledge this report. I think it's something which hopefully the new council will embrace.
Thank you, Councillor Oxley. Councillor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a wonderful initiative. Absolutely brilliant, sort of highlights something that's been going on through the year. And it's very, very good that the task and finish groups are highlighted in the piece of scrutiny panel. And we know that the street writing task and finish group are still waiting for the officers' responses. Thank you very much indeed.
Any other points, members? Would you like to comment on that? Sorry, I was distracted. Councillor Cross was saying to my.
It is just a point of explanation as the Chair of the, it's slightly deviation but I think I should put the record straight as the Chair. I have been in contact with officers and hasn't said that the places we've been at agreement on the future direction of that report. And as we say, it's a large use of work and so another please for the new council to really get that to, with the new objectives mainly.
Thank you, Councillor Lamy. We are asked to note that on the recommendations this evening, so there is no vote required on that particular item. And so we move to item number 12 this evening, joint arrangements under external organisations. Sorry, Councillor Begg.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Last Friday, I attended the Rutland pilot scheme and the key, two things really. One is if we can get some funding, we might get a habitat improvement in the upper reaches of the Chaita. And the second, I would ask all present members and certainly anyone who returns who has got a ward with any riparian thing on the Chaita or the Gwarch. We are trying to set up a riverwarden scheme. There is now a project officer who has been funded certainly for the next year and I know she would be very keen, possibly it's a matter for the new, well, I think it is a matter for the new council but I would like to register it here because it's something where the community can really, really get involved. And I'm sure there are people out there who would be very, very keen to do that and that some of us members do not realize it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Begg. Any other members this evening? Councillor Peggy.
Just three. The Midland Arts Council met 10 days ago. In that, we learned that we had received 78,000 pounds, as a grant, towards three interns for museums. One in the museum across the road, one in Rocks by Rail, and one, you'd be surprised to hear, in Mansfield, but that was part of a grouping together. We would be taking three interns out of this year's graduations on museum ideas. I think that brings a really good positive thing to a service which has been under significant pressure around the country and will bring new ideas in. And that funding covers the cost of those three interns for the year. I attended and chaired the East Midlands Council's Improvement Board, where we concentrated on two things. One is the future of peer reviews. The second thing was how we did induction training and what training was going to be available for new members after the next election so that people can get up to speed very quickly. And then on Thursday, I am attending the Local Government Association, Places and Places, a people board, where we will be taking a paper on devolution and a paper on the independent report on government, local government funding, which will be quite an interesting discussion.
Thank you, Councillor Peggy. No, thank you very much for those. And so item number 13, notice of motions.
Number six, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. So we move to item number 14, financial procedibles on page 25 of your agenda this evening. Councillor King, I understand you will be introducing this item.
Chair, I appear to have drawn a short straw. This is a document which the Constituent Working Party has been working on there for some months. That group, just to remind you, which is a cross-party, Councillor Peggy, Councillor Baines, Councillor Waller, Councillor Gale, Councillor Parker and myself. And we've been working with officers to amend project proposals which are clearly somewhat out of date, have been around for quite a while. And also to consider whether the council are prepared to go along with some changes in the levels of authority that we currently have within the organisation. Those levels go back again many, many years and in terms of operational now are proving to be somewhat confined and finding in terms of day-to-day operations. So all of this has been to the Conservative Working Group and has come forward their recommendations. There are a number of changes, they are outlined to a degree for you for those who haven't read the full paper on page 27 on the 4.10. I would ask that if you had any questions about it, we've asked officers before. There's no detailed paper that we have before us this evening but I am prepared to try and take questions and answer those questions on behalf of the people working on it that's been looking at those. And then the proposals, number six, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor King. So I have a second of questions for us. Thank you, Councillor Peggy. And members, Councillor Oxley.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I welcome this, I think it's a good opportunity for the council to, in a sense, ensure that they are operating most efficiently and within the law. And so it's good that we have set it out very clearly that the role is of this council when it comes to setting budgets and like. I would ask how, I noticed that scrutiny would be given a role, a bigger role in overseeing the management of departments. So that the departments overrun, then will be, scrutiny will be asking questions. I think I might have been reading that in the report. So my question is about training and ensuring that those people on the scrutiny panels that will be asked, well, there will be more responsibilities for them, that members of those panels will be able to do that role effectively and efficiently. That's one question. The other question I had is about, on page 27, significantly more details now in respect of core financial processes, including the use of eBay. And so I'll ask a question as to what exactly that means. Those are my two questions.
Thank you, Councillor Oxley. And previously, I'd like to go back to the portfolio holder to summarise at the end and answer those questions at the end of Monday. And so other members? Councillor Richardson.
I would be against what is suggested for 10, increasing the amount from 250 to half a million. What we're seeing slowly is an erosion of democratic democracy. The whole idea is that we are all elected to represent the people, and we should be coming to council and making that view known on behalf of our members of that proportion of electorate, to get the right decisions within this. And I'm vividly against the cabinet system, the way it's gone. Some UK councils have already removed the cabinet system, and have gone back to the committee system. You'll notice that we don't even call ourselves committees anymore, but scrutiny. We're panels now. The definition of a panel and committee are very, very different. It just means you're even more to us, as scrutiny members, if you're not on a committee. But I do question one part, and that's 4.6. One of the key issues to address is to ensure that FPRs comply with the local authorities functioning responsible in the regulations 2000 as amendment. I understand that 4.1 refers to the Local Government Act, which is an act of parliament. And that's what we work on, what's been approved by Parliament and is recorded in Hansar. But what is this legislation down here? Is this something that's been approved by Parliament and recorded in Hansar? So it is actually law, and therefore what we're doing is carrying out the government wishes? Or is it some other? And it's just been thrown in between? I don't know, and I think members need to be clear on that before they make any improvements. If this is what they're approving, you know, that's all I think, there should be more information.
Thank you, Castle Richardson. Other members? Castle Waller.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to remember that our role here is to guide policy and to develop policy with the people of Raitham. Our role is not to micromanage the budget. We need to be confident, as members, that offices are operating within the financial endpoints that we give them, but there's nothing in this paper that doesn't do that indeed. In many ways, it would be considerably easier for us during our quarterly reviews to ensure that offices are operating within the parameters that we've given them previously. And I think the proposals in this report can only be seen as positive. As to the levels, the financial levels, time moves on. Inflation happens and all the rest of it. We can't go back to a time eons ago, when members were, a full council was approving what today would be considered very small sums. And indeed, when I was an officer of a local authority some, oh gosh, 20 or more years ago, the level that I had power to spend was actually far in excess of what a number of our officers even do today. So I think we've been controlling perhaps a little bit too closely in the past. So I would encourage everybody to support what's in this paper.
Castle Waller. Castle King, sorry, Castle Lamy.
Sir, I was in a strange position, I sort of, possibly starting to agree with the country a bit, which at one point sort of went off on its political drivel. But I would go back to the actual policy at hand. It is 4.98. I do welcome, as Castle Waller said, that the key of the change in policy being affected is written throughout, and I'm glad that is, but it is just the two, the amount of £100,000 between the two functional budgets. And it's that the change between the functional branches, and sort of how that is defined in the balance, which slightly, it's kind of easy about, my mind's just sort of cast it back to the people review, where I have been, I've said it in this chamber, I don't think there was the most budgetary control with that, and £100,000 would make up a large part of member budgets. So it is within that sort of context. I mean, I will support this, and I do, just slightly uneasy with it going forward, and any future review, I would just, I would sort of flag it and sort of notice going forward.
Thank you.
One more question. I agree with what Castle Lamy said, which is in 4.9, it says the revised FPRs are resented. That's ten minutes worth of support.
Yeah, that should have been resented, but I keep pointing that out. And any other members like to add anything at this point? No? And Castle King, would you like to sum up before we?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've read the report lots of times, very again the weekend. Sure, the members doing this ones to this, so I want to go to points and the answers. But in terms of, as Oxley's a question, others, I don't know, Castle is well aware. What the report really does change is where offices are making changes to funding, is that there will be a report system whereby you will have the opportunity to see what that is and scrutinise that change that is made. So that effectively is the only real change that I would see, and the rest of it is already inherent, and scrutiny has that right to go through the quarterly outlets and all that information. But clearly, if under the new rules, a viability is done, then that would be a little role that scrutiny would have an opportunity to see, and I don't think there's much else in there that is all. Your question about eBay, it's unfortunate that the officer about the report is, it's quite rightly used the word eBay, but I would say web in general. Previously, we hadn't got anything that enabled this authority to easily deal with, perhaps saving itself some money by web purchasing or web selling. And we used a little bit of that to dispose of some of the items that we had at the Enterprise Bar. And in terms of obtaining stuff, I think there were still opportunities there for this authority. I'm well aware some authorities do actually just use the web and email to acquire merchandise, rather than additional buying groups, so this document allows that the authority puts in the controls that would be necessary. In terms of Castle Richardson's point on 4.6, now I did look on the web before to see about the 2000 regulations. Now, I'm confident that that is something that if we have to comply with, I can't say it's in Hansar, but it ended up that far. But I will wait for the chief exec to confirm after I've spoken, as to whether or not she agrees that I believe that's a due and proper procedure, but I looked it up, and it was there. I didn't read it, it was pages and pages, but I thought people got officers to tell that was appropriate, but I will put in on that later. In terms of the levels, yes, I put something to it about the levels, but I think members here know that I am one who will control every action, I'm given half a chance. And releasing the range to some degree is often proper. I would also ask us to look and say that in terms of the levels we're talking about, there's nothing in the paper that actually exceeds not much more than one and a half percent of our net budget, on our gross budget, but our net budget. So the actual overall levels we're talking about is relatively a small figure overall. And compared to other authorities, which you know the work offices did to look at what other authorities do in terms of their rights, they are still much less than many other authorities have in their system. As a security against the viability issue, which was the part of the point that Castle Lamy raised, it's really important that we get those functional budgets sorted out. I mean, Castle Richardson, with this one, or this red or not red earlier on, made a reference to taking highways money and putting it into a people department. That wouldn't beat this test, so that against 120 without £100,000, it wouldn't beat the test, because the test is it has to be within the functional budget. If highways and added social care wouldn't be within the functional budget. But if highway said, I've had some money for gritting, but actually I've got something else that is related to that, and I want to buy it too, that's where this functional budget would apply. So it was in, within that control, clearly of a similar nature. So if it was patchy to footpath, then that's a sort of argument that's going to let it go on. But the functional budget's doing, it can be sorted out very clearly, there's always no misunderstanding on that. When they're sorted out, I suggest that they go to scrutiny, and scrutiny see me satisfied that there is a, the functional budget to do allow for reasonable transfer in that budget. And I think, Chair, that answers all the questions. To me, I would remind members, if you don't like it, then in six months' time, the new council can change it.
Thank you very much, Castle King.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, the regulations are creatures of the statute, so they have exactly the same status as the original legislation, the statute was put in place. They're just a mechanism for primary members or adding to the usual primary legislation.
Thank you very much indeed. And so, both, we've had a proposal and a second. I'm going to take each recommendation separately this evening. So if I could ask for all those in favour of recommendation 2.1, please? And against?
Two.
And abstentions?
Zero.
Recommendation 2.2, all those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
And against?
Two.
Abstentions?
Zero.
Zero. Recommendation 2.3, all those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Seventeen, two members, Chair.
Two members, thank you. And recommendation 2.4, all those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
And against?
Two.
And abstentions? Thank you very much indeed, members. And so now on to item number 15, we move to governance reviews, the future of parish. Castle Baines, would you like to introduce the name?
Thank you very much. I think the easiest way is just to read the recommendation, which is, the council brought the recommendation of the Community Governance Review concerning the parishes of Exton and Horn, as attached to the tenet E, being explicitly the existing parishes of Horn and Exton be amalgamated. The new parish outline is marked in dark red on the map, and attaches tenet A, being known as Exton and Horn, and in consequence, existing parishes of Exton and Horn shall cease to exist. And two, two, the council gives effect to the recommendation of the review, and according to makes the Rudden Reorganisation of Community Governance Order 2015, a draft of which is set out tenet 10. We are talking of three houses in this. It has been consulted with those three houses, so 100% have been consulted. The parish council thought it had been done years ago. It needs to be done and sorted out, and this makes it very clear, and it needs to be done now so that it can be taken effect during the upcoming election.
Castle Baines, I have a second. Thank you, Castle King. Would anyone do like to make any comments on this item this evening? Castle Gale.
Just how it will be recorded in history. Exton and Horn, yes, there was the one parish of Horn, and how will that be recorded in history?
Are there any other points that any members would like to make? Now, on that basis, Castle Begley would like to include that in your side up, please? I'd be lucky if you were able to.
It will be fully recorded through the various items that are there. There are pages of the various orders, et cetera. Horn will be, still have its name, and will be included in the name with Exton, for which it is very closely associated. And in future history of Exton, I would suggest we also include Horn.
Thank you, Castle Begley. And so that recommendation, sorry, Castle Gale, do you switch your microphone off, sorry? Thank you very much indeed. And against, we'll take recommendations separately, so if I could ask, please, for all those in favour of recommendation 2.1? That's unanimous, thank you very much. And recommendation 2.2, please, members. All those in favour?
That's unanimous again, Chair, so we can.
Also unanimous, thank you very much indeed. I've not been notified of any other urgent business this evening, so I shall close the meeting at 19.45. Thank you very much for your reflections, thank you.